All right, we're about to get ready. Everybody ready? All right, for those who don't know me, my name's Jimmy Davis. I'm the mayor of the city of Bayonne. And we're here tonight. First and foremost, first and foremost, I will say that my council and myself as the mayor of the city of Bayonne support this project 100%. This project means everything to the city of Bayonne's economic future and its quality of life future. It is also, it is also, and think about this, we're talking 10 years of construction jobs, union construction jobs. Now, I know that, I know there are people here that don't support it, and you know what, that's everybody's right. And that's why we're here tonight. But what I do know for the city of Bayonne is that we are growing and we're only going to get bigger and stronger. Jersey City, downtown Jersey City and Hoboken have grown enormously over the last 30 years. And that's a good thing. But nothing, nothing has been done for the infrastructure to handle that growth. That's what this project does. And that's what we're here for tonight. So I just, I just want to finish with one thing. Everyone is entitled to their opinion. Let's be good about it. People agree, people disagree. Let's be union, let's be non-union, whatever your feeling is. Let's remember, we all live in the same areas. We all work together. Let's not fight over this. Let's be civil. That's what this meeting's here for. I want to thank you all for being here. And I'm going to turn it back over to Tom Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. We appreciate your participation in this public hearing. Good evening, and thank you for taking the time to join us at the public hearing for the first project of the Newark Bay Hudson County Extension Improvements Program, the reconstruction between Interchange 14 in Newark and Interchange 14A in Bayonne and Jersey City. I am Tom Hall, Director of the Law Department at the New Jersey Turnpike Authority and the Hearing Officer for this public hearing. This public hearing is being conducted pursuant to New Jersey Executive Order 172. The purpose of this hearing is to provide a forum for the public to ask questions or provide comments regarding Project 1 of the Newark Bay Hudson County Extension Improvements Program. Before I outline the process, I'd like to go over some housekeeping items. First, language translation services are available in the Translation Services Room across from the women's restrooms. If you have not done so already, please silence your cell phones. Tonight's agenda includes a presentation on the program, Project 1: Interchanges 14 to 14A, an update on the environmental processes and the next steps for Project 1. Following the presentation, public officials and then members of the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions or provide comments for the record. The hearing guidelines are as follows. If you are attending in person and would like to formally share a comment or question, please register at the speaker's table. When the public comment period begins, your name will be called in the order that it was received and you will be directed to either microphone 1 or 2. Microphone 1 is on this side. Microphone 2 is on this side. Once your name is called, please come to the designated microphone. When you speak, please state your name, spell your last name and provide your comments or questions. In order to accommodate as many speakers as possible, each speaker will be allotted 2 minutes and we will not be able to respond to your individual comments or questions this evening. However, this hearing is being recorded by a stenographer and your comments or questions will be addressed in the formal public hearing report, which will be made publicly available via the program website, NBHCE.com. If you would like to discuss your questions or comments one-on-one with members of the program management team and other experts, the information stations around the room will remain open until the conclusion of the public hearing. Additionally, there are handouts available with frequently asked questions. These are the most commonly asked questions that the Turnpike Authority received from the public. If you have not received a handout, please request one at the registration tables or the information stations. If you prefer not to speak this evening or are attending virtually but would like to place your comments or questions on the record, you may submit your comments or questions via regular mail using one of the comment forms provided at the registration tables, online through a comment form available on the program website, again, NBHCE.com, or by phone by calling our toll-free number, If you choose to mail your comments or questions, the address for doing so is included on the comment form. You may also hand in your written comments or questions at the registration tables here tonight. Pursuant to New Jersey Executive Order 172, the Turnpike Authority will continue to accept comments and questions until July 3, 2025. The recorded presentation will be available on the Turnpike Authority and program websites within seven days. Now for the presentation. You will hear from the program managers, Lisa K. Navarro, New Jersey Turnpike Authority Senior Supervising Engineer, and Anthony Pietnik, Vice President at HNTB. It is my pleasure to introduce Lisa Navarro, Senior Supervising Engineer at the Turnpike Authority. Lisa is an award-winning leader in the engineering field and the program manager for the Newark Bay Hudson County Extension Improvements Program. Lisa.
Tom, thank you for the kind introduction. And thank you to Mayor Davis for hosting us here tonight and for your unwavering support for this program. I will begin with a brief overview of the program. I also want to thank you all for being here tonight so you can learn more about this program. The New Jersey Turnpike Authority is undertaking this critical safety and modernization program due to the age and deteriorating condition of the 29 bridges that make up the 8.1-mile Turnpike Extension. You can see for yourself, these are inspection photos of the Project 1 structures. Project 1 is the reconstruction between Interchanges 14 and 14A, including the big bridge formerly named the Vincent Robert Cosciano Bridge, but more commonly known as the North Bay Bridge. Project 1 is the most urgent project due to the severe deterioration you see in these photos. Some are framing this infrastructure program as just a widening. But first and foremost, this program is about the safety of the families and workers who rely on the Turnpike Extension every single day. To maintain the extension and keep it safe, there's constant maintenance and repairs, which causes major congestion and traffic backing up onto the local streets. From 2019 through 2024, there was not a single month without lane or shoulder closing due to repair and maintenance activities. In 2017, we had to close the North Bay Bridge for 36 hours for emergency repairs due to a significant structural issue. I cannot emphasize this enough. The Turnpike Extension is at the end of its life and it must be replaced. We've seen the tragedies that occur around the country when we don't invest in our aging infrastructure. The Turnpike Authority simply cannot and will not take that risk. And no one should want us to. The North Bay Hudson County Extension is 8.1 miles of transportation infrastructure from Interchange 14 in Newark to Jersey Ave in Jersey City. It's a state of New Jersey Office of Emergency Management Evacuation Route. Since there continues to be a lot of confusion surrounding the proposed lanes for this program, I want to take a moment to walk you through the proposed number of lanes, which from west to east is 4 to 3 to 2. So let me break that down for you. From Interchanges 14 to 14A, we're expanding capacity to four lanes in each direction. We are adding two lanes in each direction in support of the housing and job growth of the nearby cities as well as the growth and success of the port. Currently, after the Interchange 14 Toll Plaza headed eastbound, you have five lanes merging into two lanes, which causes a significant traffic congestion and greatly contributes to crashes. With these improvements, the five lanes will merge to four lanes, reducing congestion and its harmful impacts and minimizing the risk of crashes. In the westbound direction, the project will reduce congestion coming out of Bayonne, making it safer and easier for vehicles leaving Bayonne. Relieving traffic congestion will encourage drivers to stay on the Turnpike Extension instead of rerouting to local roads. In fact, traffic studies show that traffic will decrease on approximately 65% of local roads in the iron-bound section of Newark and will decrease on approximately 71% of local roads in northern Bayonne and in Greenville in Jersey City. These are the neighborhoods adjacent to the Project 1 area. From Interchanges 14A to 14C, we are expanding capacity to three lanes in each direction. We're only adding one lane in each direction here because over 1/3 of the eastbound traffic headed over the North Bay Bridge exits at Interchange 14A. Interchange 14C to Jersey Ave will remain two lanes in each direction. No new lanes are being proposed after Interchange 14C. The reason is because this program was never about New York City or the Holland Tunnel. It has always been about the growth and success of Jersey City, Bayonne, Newark, and the ports. In addition to the confusion surrounding the proposed number of lanes, there continues to be a substantial amount of misinformation about this program. As the program manager, it is important that I set the record straight. First, no city, county, state, or federal tax dollars are being utilized to fund the program. The program is being paid for with Turnpike Authority toll revenue. Money from this program cannot be dedicated to public transit. For legal reasons, unused funds must be directed to other high-priority Turnpike Authority projects. This program is not taking money away from public transit. Although the Turnpike Authority is not a public transit agency, we recognize the importance of it. The Turnpike is contributing half a billion dollars a year annually to the state to support mass transit. For context, from 2024 to the completion of Project 1, the Turnpike Authority will have provided $6 billion towards mass transit. This amount is higher than the construction cost of Project 1. Additionally, the Turnpike Authority is also contributing up to $89 million annually to the Gateway Tunnel project, which will provide long-term resiliency, reliability, and redundancy to hundreds of thousands of daily passengers who travel into Manhattan. The 29 bridges that make up the Turnpike Extension cannot be rehabbed. They must be replaced. We wish they could be rehabilitated. Bridges around the nation are being replaced for this very reason. This program is no different. There are no residential displacements associated with this program. No one is going to lose their home. Traffic heading into the Holland Tunnel is not the cause of the projected Turnpike Extension increases. As you can see on the board in the back, origin destination data by an independent third party shows that nearly 80% of the eastbound traffic, Turnpike Extension traffic, is final destination is Jersey City, Bayonne, and other parts of Hudson County. This data is further validated by the Turnpike Authority's congestion pricing numbers. From the start of congestion pricing to June 8, on average, there has been a 2.7 decrease in traffic at Interchange 14A, 5.4% increase at Interchange 14B, and a 0.1% decrease at Interchange 14C. Before I continue, there is one more important issue that I'd like to address. Recently, I've been hearing that environmental justice was not considered during the environmental review process. I want to be very clear, this is not true. Environmental justice has been a major part of the planning and design for this program since the very beginning, and that includes both the federal and the state environmental review processes, both which took over four years to complete. The program is committed to equitable infrastructure development. I'd like to briefly walk you through the program schedule. Currently, we are in the final design process for the first project, Interchanges 14 to 14A, and we have incorporated many of the comments and recommendation that we have received under the Public Information Centers and community meetings. Construction of the first project is scheduled to begin in 2026 with a 10-year construction duration. Due to the severe deterioration of the existing North Bay Bridge, traffic must be moved off of it and onto the first replacement bridge in 2031. The second bridge replacement will be completed in 2036. Anthony Pietnik will explain more. In pink and blue, you will see the schedule for the remainder of the program. The program will continue to have stakeholder and community engagement throughout its duration. It is now my pleasure to turn things over to Anthony Pietnik, HNTB Program Manager, to discuss more details about Project 1: Interchanges 14 to 14A.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. So as Lisa stated, this project, Project 1, is about the full reconstruction of the extension from Interchanges 14 to 14A. This project, Project 1, is 4.1 miles long. You see it on the screen. Of that 4.1 miles, there are 16 major bridges. They're shown in red. Those major bridges consist of over 3 and 1/4 miles of structure. Now, the condition of these bridges and the almost 70-year life that these bridges have served, it is time to replace these bridges. They are the highest priority. So now, let me go through for you a couple of the key design components for this project. As I mentioned, replacement of the 16 bridges. This includes the Newark Bay Bridge with two cable stay bridges. Additionally, for operational improvements in traffic flow, we will revise, we will replace the two lanes with four lanes in each direction. And to improve safety, we are going to add full standard shoulders to each side of the roadway. And lastly, but not least, full new drainage system will be designed to accommodate all of the water that we are seeing today in today's storms. Now, let me walk you through Project 1 from west to east. On the western side, you have Interchange 14. Interchange 14 is located in a very industrial area. It consists of seven major bridges. This industrial area is surrounding the interchange with Port Newark, with the Liberty International Airport, and significant amount of rail operations. There are continuous discussions with Conrail, with the Port Authority, and the FAA to develop the design criteria and work through the design of these interchanges. Now, one of the areas I'll note is that this project will not extend beyond the Toll Plaza at Interchange 14. In fact, we will not touch it. We want to maintain traffic flowing freely through there. And one of the key focus points for the designers on this interchange 14 is to try and minimize the footprint and do the staging within the footprint of the existing interchange 14. But it's important to maintain the traffic flow that occurs and all the backups and the high crash rates that are occurring in this area. So, for example, what you see on the slide in the existing condition at Interchange 14, as you go eastbound off of the ramps, you are in five lanes of traffic. Those five lanes have to merge down to two lanes to get over the Newark Bay Bridge. This results in tremendous backups and high crash rates. So, the proposed design, the designers are looking at, working on this now, is going to take the five lanes through down to four lanes. They will merge into four lanes. This will reduce the backups. It will improve the traffic flow. It will reduce crashes. It will improve travel time. So, let me take you now to the middle of the project, Newark Bay, where the signature structure is the existing Vincent Cosciano Bridge or the Newark Bay Bridge, as most of us know it as. That bridge will be replaced with two cable stay structures. You've seen them on Tappan Zee Bridge. You've seen them at Gothel's. You've seen them. They are the predominant structure these days. Now, as part of the design criteria for this, we have been working extensively with both the FAA and the U.S. Coast Guard. What does that mean for design criteria of this bridge? This means this bridge has an aviation restriction on how high it can be because of its proximity to Newark Airport. Additionally, we are now going to build a longer span across the navigational channel, 800 feet versus the approximately 670 feet that the existing bridge has. In addition, we are going to build this bridge higher above the water, the sea level. This will accommodate future sea level rise. Now, all of the bridges will be built to today's codes, the most current codes available. That means we are going to design for heavier truckloads, the heavier truckloads we're seeing out of the ports. We're going to design for ship passage safety. We will design for earthquakes. And believe it or not, on long structures, probably everybody has seen the Tacoma Narrows' Galloping Gertie collapse in the 1930s. Wind, wind on these large structures and with our larger storms, it becomes a predominant issue. So, one of the things the designers are focusing hard on in this section of the extension is the design and the construction staging. It's very important to maintain traffic, but to minimize impacts. So, in keeping with our commitment on minimizing impacts to the environment, to the communities, and drivers, I have a video. The existing bridge is shown and we will build a second bridge, the new bridge, Cable Stay Bridge, to the north. Once that bridge is constructed, in 2031, we will move the traffic to that new bridge to maintain all lanes of traffic. Once that traffic's moved, we'll demolish the existing bridge and then we will build a second bridge in its footprint. This will provide dedicated lanes eastbound towards Bayonne and dedicated lanes westbound to Newark. Now, this takes longer. Clearly, it takes longer to do it this way. And it costs more. But it reduces the impacts to the communities. There will be no residential displacements because of constructing the bridge in this phasing. We are prioritizing community, environment, and the driving and maintaining traffic. Now, on the eastern terminus of Project 1 is where we are today. Right, Interchange 14A. Most of us know it. It has a significantly long span known as the Southeast Viaduct. You see it in red. It is extremely complex structure over the rail, over Conrail, over the light rail, over the roadways. It cannot be maintained today. It needs to be replaced. Now, the six structures here are going to be replaced in phases. And we know we are in a sensitive area. We are now adjacent to neighborhoods. So, as part of this program, as Lisa mentioned earlier, there's an adaptive management plan that lays out that the authority is going to monitor air quality. They're going to monitor noise. They're going to monitor vibration to avoid, and they're going to do this early to avoid impacts. Additionally, you'll see along the southeastern edge of the extension through the Bayonne, or adjacent to the Bayonne neighborhoods, you're going to see new, longer, and better noise walls to help mitigate the noise for these communities. And of course, we are aware that there's significant flooding issues in the area. One thing that we're going to do is a new drainage system for the extension infrastructure so it doesn't mix with the combined sewer systems and exacerbate the problem. Now, a key component to this is, and it's on a board back there. Right, if you are leaving Bayonne, right, the traffic backs up as you're going to go westbound towards Newark. You go through Interchange 14A, westbound towards Newark. That ramp is two lanes. That two lanes merges down to one lane. And then, that one lane has to merge into the existing two lanes of the extension. This creates tremendous back. It is creating tremendous high crash rates. That's just not acceptable. We can do better. And the proposed solution, so when the bridges are complete, it will be to provide two lanes and they will be two dedicated lanes on that ramp west to Newark. They will no longer have to merge into the through lanes from traffic coming from Jersey City westbound. And the traffic from Jersey City westbound won't have to deal with the merge of the traffic coming out of Bayonne. This incredibly improves traffic flow, reduces backup. It will reduce crashes. It will improve travel time tremendously. Now, a unique opportunity for Project 1 is the opportunity to provide the public better access to Newark Bay and to the shoreline. As part of this program, the authority is committing to building a walkway from the Kowski Park north along 440 up towards the bridge. This walkway will support pedestrian traffic, cyclists. It will be a shared-use path and it will be ADA compliant. We are going to be looking forward, and this will be built when the final construction is completed. We are looking forward to working with the public to develop the details for this park and for this walkway. Now, we were here a year ago, actually just over a year ago, in this very same spot at a public information center. And we were listening to the residents and the public at that meeting. And one of the things we were proposing in the project is a brand-new ramp that would access 440 off of JFK. Now, the feedback from the residents, from the community, was, wow, we don't like that. That is going to bring a lot of new traffic through our neighborhoods for that new ramp. Well, we took that feedback and we met with all the stakeholders in the area. And the response was, from every And the response was, from every stakeholder, we agree. That ramp is not necessary. We don't want it. As a result, that ramp is out of this project. And that's a great thing. That is great constructive feedback that we received and could better the program. And now, one of the other things we heard about a year ago, and I heard a lot about this from people, the previous owner of the former Marist High School, and you see the existing condition on the left, right? We heard a lot of complaints about noise, about dust, about drainage and flooding issues. Well, the authority is in the process of obtaining this property, and they will use this property to help stage construction for Project One. However, the authority wants to be a very good neighbor, and the commitment is to build a berm around the perimeter and plant trees and bushes and grasses, and then add a decorative fence around the property. This will reduce noise that comes out. It will address drainage issues, and it will just make the area visually much more appealing. So, what's next for this 4.1 miles of roadway, the roadway between 14 and 14A? The final design has started and is ongoing, but the designers are here. They are listening, and they are learning, right? Just like a year ago, we took your feedback, and where we can incorporate it, we do. Right? So, as the design is completed, we will start construction in stages. The first construction contract is expected to start in 2026. That will be construction access into the bay so that in 2027, we can start construction of the permanent first Cable Stay Bridge. And as I mentioned in 2031, we will move that traffic off of the existing bridge onto the new bridge and start to demolish the existing bridge. We will then build the new bridge, and Project One will be complete. We anticipate this to be completed in approximately 2036. So now, I'd like to hand it back to Lisa to talk about environmental commitments and how we can minimize and avoid impacts during construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. I'm proud to share that the U.S. Coast Guard recently issued a finding of no significant impact for Project One, meaning that this project will not have a significant impact on the surrounding communities. The finding of no significant impact is the conclusion of four years of rigorous environmental analysis and coordination to complete the National Environmental Policy Act process, known as the NEPA process. As part of this process, an environmental assessment, known as an EA, was prepared following all NEPA regulations. The EA also documents the Coast Guard and the Turnpike Authority's compliance with various federal and state regulations, including the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, Endangered Species Act, and the National Historic Preservation Act, to name a few. The New Jersey Turnpike Authority had frequent consultation with key federal and state agencies, including the U.S. Coast Guard, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the U.S. EPA, FAA, NJDEP, and more. The U.S. Coast Guard also led a separate consultation process to comply with the National Historic Preservation Act that included additional local agencies and tribal representatives. A draft of the EA was issued in May 2024, which provided a 60-day comment period to allow agencies and the public to provide written comments. Over 1,100 comment submissions were received by the closing date of July 15, 2024, just less than a year ago from today. The Turnpike Authority, working with the Coast Guard, reviewed all the comments received and responded to them. These responses are included in Appendix G of the environmental assessment, which can be found on the environmental responsibility page of the program website. Most importantly, many of the comments received have been incorporated into a plan that we developed for the first project to avoid community impacts. Anthony pointed out a few, and I will also explain additional modifications in more detail later. This comprehensive effort is what led to the U.S. Coast Guard's finding of no significant impact. The issuance of the finding of no significant impact and the bridge permit by the U.S. Coast Guard clear the way for construction on Project One to begin in 2026. The Turnpike Authority also prepared a New Jersey Executive Order 215 environmental impact statement to comply with state regulations. Environmental justice was a major part of the NJEO215 EIS. In fact, 15 different environmental justice metrics were evaluated, and every metric found that the project will not adversely impact community and environmental quality. We are following the science. I want to reemphasize that this program is committed to environmental justice and ensuring that historically underserved neighborhoods in the project area benefit from the economic opportunities generated by this program. Now, I'd like to quickly summarize some of the key environmental elements of the first project. I won't mention all of them in the interest of time. The project will relieve traffic congestion between interchange 14 and 14A, include a new and expanded noise barrier in Bayonne to minimize impacts, address the anticipated impacts of climate change through resilient design and construction standards, and improve navigational clearance to address future sea level rise. Additionally, there will be no residential displacements. No one will lose their home. This project will not encroach on or affect access to parks, community facilities, or places of worship. There will be no meaningful difference in air quality. This project will not affect community cohesion and character, and there will be no significant increase in vehicle or truck traffic on local streets. I also want to share another important part of the finding of no significant impact. For Project One, the Turnpike Authority will implement what is called an adaptive management plan. This plan is a condition of the finding of no significant impact and part of the final EA. The adaptive management plan is a community-driven plan that outlines specific measures that will be undertaken to avoid or lessen potential impacts and protect the public health. This plan reflects the recommendations and feedback that were received from the community and stakeholders in the form of comments and during community meetings, as well as at the public information centers. We are especially proud of this plan as it goes above and beyond state and federal environmental regulatory requirements. Under this plan, the Turnpike Authority will conduct ongoing outreach before and during construction to inform the community about upcoming construction activities and to listen to concerns of the residents in the neighborhoods near the construction site. Under the adaptive management plan during construction, air quality will be monitored to ensure compliance with the Clean Air Act. The air quality monitoring is a direct response to a request made at a community meeting. We will also be monitoring noise and vibration. Additionally, the Turnpike Authority will require contractors to use the newest and cleanest EPA-approved construction engines. There will also be public reporting of air quality, noise, and vibration. This data will be made available on the program website. In this slide, you will see a quick summary of the outreach we've conducted to date and key engagement strategies that will continue throughout the project. There will be targeted outreach and notifications to residents and stakeholders near the construction site. Community meetings, quarterly newsletters, continued website updates. We will also be working to make sure the residents in the project area have access to employment and small business opportunities. I want to reinforce that community outreach will continue throughout the entire program. Thank you, everyone, for your participation tonight. We want to continue hearing your feedback. Now, I'll pass it back over to Tom Hall to initiate the comment and question
Thank you, Lisa. Before we begin the formal question and comment period, I would like to briefly summarize the process again. To recap, this public hearing is being conducted pursuant to New Jersey Executive Order 172. If you are attending in person and would like to formally share a comment or question for the record, please register at the speaker's table if you have not done so already. Speaker names will be called in the order that they are received. When you hear your name called, please proceed to either microphone one or two as directed. Microphone one is on this side, and microphone two is on that side. When you speak, please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your comment. In order to accommodate as many comments and questions as possible, each speaker will be allotted two minutes, and we will not be able to respond to your individual comments or questions. Given the large number of participants who have signed up to speak this evening, we ask that you honor the time limit. There is a time clock at the table in front of the stage. As a courtesy to the speakers waiting in line, the microphone will be silenced if the allotted time is exceeded. As a reminder, this hearing is being recorded by a sonographer, and your comments or questions will be addressed in the formal public hearing report, which will be made available via the program website, NBHCE.com. If you would like to discuss your questions or comments one-on-one with members of the program management team and other experts, the information stations around the room will remain open until the conclusion of the public hearing. Additionally, there are handouts available with frequently asked questions. These are the most commonly asked questions that the Turnpike Authority received from the public. If you have not received a handout, please request one at the registration tables or the information stations. If you are joining virtually or prefer not to speak this evening but would like to place your comments or questions on the record, you may submit your comments via regular mail using one of the comment forms provided at the registration tables, online through a comment form available on the program website, again, that is NBHCE.com, or by phone by calling our toll-free number, 800-340-8977. If you choose to mail your comments or questions, the address for doing so is included on the comment form. You may also hand in your written comment at the registration tables. Pursuant to New Jersey Executive Order 172, the Turnpike Authority will continue to accept comments and questions until July 3, 2025. The recorded presentation will be available on the Turnpike Authority and program websites within seven days. Now, we will begin the comment period. At this time, we would like to invite any elected officials in the audience who would like to provide comments for the record to come up to the microphones. Again, in the interest of accommodating as many speakers as possible, we ask that you limit your comments or questions to two minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me? My name is Ravi Bala. I am the mayor of the city of Hoboken. And let me state for the record that the mayor of Hoboken and the entire governing body, the city council of the city of Hoboken, are 100% united in opposition to this project. Let me make that clear. And I come here as a concerned community member as well, with a broad coalition of advocates, residents, and public officials to say that this project must be stopped, that we keep on conflating the issue of updating infrastructure with widening lanes. Nobody is against updating outdated infrastructure. I've been doing it, and if it involves union jobs, even better. I've been updating infrastructure as mayor for eight years now because we underinvested, invested in Hoboken, and it's created jobs for unions. That's a good thing. No one's against that. We're against flawed transportation policy that creates more cars, widening lanes, creates pollution, creates harmful effects on the environment, and hurts communities. Don't conflate the two issues. And let's be clear about the facts. New Jersey City has a highest asthma prevalence rate in Hudson County, rates that exceed the state average. In 2020, Hudson County received an F grade for air quality from the American Lung Association. And let me say this, no one is against well-paying union jobs. That is a democratic value. But we want union jobs that don't harm the environment. We want union jobs. We want union jobs that create clean energy. We want union jobs that create mass transit infrastructure and options for our communities. Those are the union jobs we want.
Okay, mayor, that's time. Time's up.
All right. I was told it would be granted a courtesy. I know the mayor of Bayonne was granted that courtesy. I'll just sum up by saying, look, you all sound like a bunch of robots up there, by the way, like AI-generated, you know, just talking lines, speaking, and you got politicians, paid politicians hiding behind you right now. And no matter how polished you sound, no matter how polished you sound...
Thank you for your comment.
No matter how polished you sound, nothing will get in the way of the power of the people to stop this project. I guarantee you. Mark my word.
Thank you for your comment.
All right. I will be just two minutes to be on the record. Again, I will say that everybody, every council member in the city of Bayonne is 100%, besides myself, 100% for I have lived in the city of Bayonne since 1963. I doubt a lot of you can say that. And I can say that that bridge has been under construction, and we've been sitting in traffic since 1963. The bridge has reached its capacity back in the 1980s. Bayonne, Bayonne is expanding, just like Hoboken expanded, just like downtown Jersey City expanded. Our port was just purchased by CGM, the third largest, the third largest container port. Public health. Can I speak? No one's asking you. You grabbed the microphone. All right. I'm going to keep, I'm going to continue talking while I'm being rudely interrupted. So, no, no, don't make her leave. Don't make her leave. Don't make her leave. Just don't make her leave. Let me finish my story. You could get up and talk. All right. So, I'm going to finish. Listen, this is what I'm talking about. This is about being civil. This project for the city of Bayonne, CGM is going to triple capacity. UPS has now made their home, Bayonne, New Jersey. IMTT is going to reconfigure three-quarters of its property. IMTT is gonna reconfigure three-quarters of its property. We are gonna become that industrial city we were back in the 70s. This city's gonna keep growing. This bridge is needed just for that purpose alone. What Hoboken and Jersey City has done is phenomenal for our economy on Hudson County. Bayonne is following that tradition.
Thank you.
And we need the bridge.
So I'll be real quick because I know we on a time clock. So for those that don't know, for me to state my name on the record, my name is Assemblyman Will Sampson. I represent the 31st District, which includes Bayonne, Jersey City, and Carney. And I want to just say, you know, I respect all my colleagues, and I just want to say I respectfully disagree with Mayor Ravi Bala at this time. I 100% support this project. And I will, and I will, and I would like to say something as far as, as we know where we live in Hudson County, a lot of people complain about development, overdevelopment. And in our cities, there's so much development going on. But the other part that the community doesn't talk about is our roads. If we have so much overdevelopment as the community complains, and I love when the community sticks up and talks about their concerns, and I want to thank all the concerned citizens that are here today, I applaud you. But we also have to be civil. The only thing that I would like to say is this, as we continue to grow our cities and our neighborhoods, we have to build stronger infrastructure for the bridge. As a leader and as a union member, union, if you're an ILA member, I want you to stand up. ILA, stand up. ILA, stand up. I'm showing you what support looks like, but it's important. It's important beyond just talking about union labor and the jobs. As a leader and elected official, my job and who I answer to is the people. And I want to do the best job for the people that put me in office and the people that I served. I cannot allow my people to go across a bridge and the bridge to give out, and then the people look at me and say, what did you do? How could you help this process? What did you change while you was an elected official? I 100% support this project, and I support everything that we're doing to make sure that it's environmentally friendly. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Isaac Smith. I'm making these comments on behalf of Jersey City Municipal Councilman James Solomon. So here we are all again. This is becoming a routine. In theory, it's a good thing the Turnpike Authority has hosted this meeting to allow the community to express its views on the project. However, this is being held after years of consistent advocacy, protest, and demands from the people and organizations in this room. The people of Jersey City and Hoboken have demanded this for years, and this is why we're in this room today. Unfortunately, we are here after you've already made one of the most important decisions about the project, to build the most expansive version of the bridge before even asking for people's views. Additionally, you've decided to hold a meeting in Bayonne and not one in Jersey City. These actions suggest you don't really want to hear what Jersey City's residents have to say about this project, but today you will. Let me say what I must have said a dozen times at this point. We know that highway widenings do not reduce congestion. Traffic does not get better. We know that highway widenings induce demand that causes more pollution, more asthma, and more cars getting off onto city streets. We know this will mean more cut-through traffic on our streets. This has all been proven by dozens of projects across the nation. As I always say, for Jersey City, this will be a generational mistake. So why is the state of New Jersey doing this? To light billions of dollars on fire with no reduction in traffic? Sadly, we cannot exactly say what the long-term impacts will be because despite our formal request, no independent analysis of the project has been made public. This is exactly why our city has stood united on this project as proposed. Regardless of political alignment, Jersey City's leaders have stood with one voice, the mayor, the whole council, our department directors, our advocacy groups, our community groups. We have all said no. And that's why we are here today in Bayonne after the design has been selected, to come and put on the record that Jersey City opposes this proposal. And not just the proposal, Jersey City opposes the process that brought it into being.
Thank you. Are there any other, are there any other elected officials who have not had the opportunity to speak? That being the case, we'll move on to the public comment portion.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, as Tom indicated, you'll either be called up to mic one or mic two, so please just listen closely for your name and your assigned microphone. So at mic one, we will have Jerry Morchek. At mic two, we will have Michelle Byrd. After Jerry, we will have George Lobeman on mic one. And after Michelle will be Abby Adams on mic two. I'll give you all a second to get to your called mic.
Hey, guys, can everyone hear me? I have to say, I agree with what everyone has said here today. But let's be realistic here. Everyone loves the environment, but we need this bridge. Without this bridge, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna allow the old bridge to collapse? Are we gonna allow an accident to occur? We need the new bridges. It's low impact. The Port Authority has done the study on the environmental issues. I respect everyone's opinions here, but this is necessary. We're in the New York metropolitan area. We have a traffic problem. I use that bridge almost every day, and I can tell you, there's a lot of pissed-off people on that bridge every day because of the traffic problems. It needs to be resolved for the quality of life in the cities surrounding the bridge. I, you know, I am concerned about, or I feel for people's concerns about the environment. I love the environment, but we need this. We need this construction. It'll improve the quality of life. It'll improve commerce. It'll improve the economy in the area. Therefore, I think we should go forward with it because we really have no other options. What are we going to do? Are we just gonna let the old bridge collapse? Are we gonna allow an accident to happen? Are we gonna allow lives to be lost? I don't think that's what we want to do. In fact, I would ask some of our neighboring communities to realize that the needs of many outweigh the needs of the few. And the people who use this bridge every day could really use four lanes in each direction. So let's get this bridge built for the union guys.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me, sir. Just a reminder, just a reminder, please say and spell your last name for the record. Thank you.
I'm just gonna be a second. My name is Michelle Byrd, B-Y-R-D. I'm the president of the Bayonne Chamber of Commerce, and I just want to say I support this project for the Bayonne business community.
Good evening. My name is George Lobeman, and I'm the director of Transportation Agencies for the Utility and Transportation Contractors Association. A lot of words. We have 1,500 members, contractor members, who do work in the state of New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, a little bit in Connecticut, some down in Delaware. This bridge will not take or can stand with an impact like has happened in several others. It doesn't have the redundancy, and it really would be a critical error not to replace it with something that can sustain a hit. I'm here to support the bridge. The bridge was opened in traffic in '56, nearly 70 years ago. That project is not a frivolous effort, but the turnpike is in fact a safety program right now. As we sit here, the bridge is having stress issues which have plagued the turnpike for the last decade. Any hit by a ship could bring that bridge down with catastrophic results, taking it completely out of use for everybody. Recent changes and expansions of the port facilities have grown the employment opportunities and at the same time jammed the roadway at times so commuting traffic is consistently delayed and shut down even. Federal dollars, this bridge is not supported by federal dollars at all. It's totally the toll payers, trucks, interstate traffic, that pay for this bridge. It's the turnpike's money. It's not federal-funded, it's not state-funded. They have to collect that money and utilize it exclusively on the turnpike projects. They have no other choice but that. It's not allowed to be used anywhere else. Over the last decade, the New Jersey transportation turnpike program has been and most successful in keeping moving along with the traffic and the safety of the issues on the road right now. I fully support it, and my 1,500 members fully support this effort.
Thank you, that's fine. Okay, Abby, before you speak, I'm just going to update the speaker queue. We're going to have Abby on mic two, followed by Chris Hartman on mic one, Virgilio Maldonado on mic two after Abby, and on mic one after Chris Hartman will be Olivia Haller. Thank you.
All set? Good evening. My name is Abby Adams, last name A-D-A-M-S. I'm here on behalf of the Associated Construction Contractors of New Jersey, ACCNJ. ACCNJ represents general building contractors, construction managers, heavy highway, site development, and utility contractors in New Jersey who hire tens of thousands of skilled union craft workers each year. The association is committed to raising the standards in construction through quality, integrity, skill, and responsibility. After the recently issued finding of no significant impact from the Coast Guard, ACCNJ is more inclined than ever to provide support for the Newark Bay-Hudson County Extension Project. The Fonzie confirms that the project complies with the federal public health guidelines, and we know the New Jersey Turnpike Authority is taking the safety and health of local residents, commuters, and employed craft workers seriously. It is imperative that we modernize and rebuild our infrastructure before disaster strikes. The turnpike extension as it stands must be replaced. Increased volume of larger, heavier trucks, electric vehicles, and nonstop traffic have created significant wear and tear to an interchange that is vital to the well-being of the New York metro area. As proven by the Coast Guard and the National Environmental Policy Act environmental assessment, this project is not only environmentally okay to move forward, but it will also maintain or improve community and environmental air quality. During construction, the 25,000 jobs, $2 billion in labor wages, and $2.8 billion in economic activity will be a positive flux for New Jersey's economy and residents. ACCNJ is more than pleased to support this project and the many benefits we will see during construction and at its completion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everybody. My name's Chris Hartman. It's H-A-R-T-M-A-N. I'm senior vice president of the New Jersey Alliance for Action. We're a nonpartisan, nonprofit association representing thousands of people across New Jersey from labor, government, utility, education. Our mission is to improve New Jersey's economy through promoting environmentally friendly capital construction and infrastructure improvement. And yes, I'm here representing them today, but also, my family has deep roots here, family that still live here. We visit, we support. The Newark Bay Extension Project, and specifically the Newark Bay Bridge, are vital investments for New Jersey and the region's future. Completion is sorely needed to replace infrastructure that's gonna be 75 years old by the time the work is done. It's infrastructure that has outlived its planned useful life, and it needs to be rebuilt and expanded. Needs to be expanded to alleviate the critical traffic congestion that wasn't planned for so long ago to serve the growing residential and commercial activity of Hudson County, which, by the way, is the fastest-growing of our 21 counties. The critical corridor is also essential for smooth flow of port activity. Our port of New York and New Jersey is among the busiest in the United States. The New Jersey Turnpike Authority is wise for planning ahead. That port traffic is expected to double by 2050. That's only 25 years away. The infrastructure will also give a boost to jobs in New Jersey. The Newark Bay Bridge will put 25,000 local people to work during construction. 18,000 of those jobs will be directly in the construction trades and the rest of all that related activity. It's another dramatic step in the critical rebuilding of the infrastructure in the region. The Newark Bay Extension is a project that we feel has to move forward. I personally, too, feel that it has to move forward. The membership of the Alliance for Action gives it's full support. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, and thanks for everybody coming out to make
Good evening. My name is Virgil Maldonado, M-A-L-D-O-N-A-D-O, and I am with the International Longshoremen's Association, also known as the ILA. This project and the expansion needs to happen now. It needs to happen for safety, traffic improvements for Bayonne, Jersey City, and Newark. If most of us have been down to the shore, returned from the shore, and/or traveled to the airports, we all know what it is sitting on this extension. It also will provide 25,000-plus jobs for the building trades, carpenters, and the International Longshoremen's Association within the port areas. Longshoremen have been traveling over this extension for 30-plus years. I have been a longshoreman for 25 years myself and have been throughout each port and have sat on that extension numerous times, sometimes more in a day. These are American jobs that are very well-needed, just as much as this expansion is needed. So I'm here to say that the International Longshoremen's Association, the ILA, supports this project. Thank you for your time.
No? Okay, there we go. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Olivia Haller, H-A-L-L-E-R. I'm the New Jersey Associate for the Regional Plan Association, the nation's oldest metropolitan planning, research, and advocacy organization. RPA strongly supports investment in transportation infrastructure as it is essential for the health and economic development of our region. However, we cannot support the NBHCE improvements program as it currently is. While the bridge replacement and related structural upgrades are absolutely necessary, we found in our analysis of the draft and final environmental assessment for interchange 14 and 14A, a number of concerns about the current design of the improvements program. These include the lack of examination of other demand management approaches, the limited scope of environmental assessment, inconsistencies with state and local transportation initiatives, and the project's failure to sufficiently consider induced demand, which is a well-documented phenomenon where adding road capacity leads to more driving, not less congestion. A project of this size and scope merits the preparation of an environmental impact statement for the entire project corridor. The majority of the project area falls in or around overburdened communities as designated by New Jersey's environmental justice law. RPA believes it is incongruent to not only conduct an environmental assessment of the first segment of the project. Failing to do so limits the understanding of potential impacts for Phase One as part of the comprehensive action. This is a disservice to the local communities that will be facing the unavoidable consequences of the expansion. Furthermore, the communities around the surrounding project area, including Newark, Jersey City, and Hoboken, have made abundantly clear that they do not support the expansion of this project. As stated, expanding roadways is a short-sighted response to congestion that often worsens the very problem it aims to solve. As such, any expansion such as this should be weighted against more sustainable and cost-efficient alternatives such as expanded transit surface, peak-hour demand management, and flexible capacity options. Forecasted traffic patterns must also include the benefits projected from regional projects such as the Gateway Program and implementation of congestion pricing.
Thank you for your comments.
Gateway will allow more people to take the train into New York City, and congestion pricing has already demonstrated significant traffic reductions for drivers and bus riders entering the congestion zone from New Jersey. Researchers from Stanford Yale, Google, and analyzed Google Maps data and found that drivers from Hudson and Bergen Counties have been making their trips into the congestion zone 8% faster.
Okay, next up, on mic two. On mic two, we have Anthony DeSimone. On mic one, Thomas Solari. Followed by Anthony, on mic one will be Robert Lombach, and followed by Thomas will be William
I'm Anthony DeSimone, D-E-S-I-M-O-N-E. I know a lot of other people made the point already, just wanted to reiterate that this project is really a safety project for all the families and workers that have to use this every day. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Thomas Solari, S-O-L-A-R-I. No matter what we do, no matter what we say, the state's going to get their way. All I know is, residents in this town, since the Port Authority did the Bayonne Bridge, they got a tax break down there. I believe the residents up here, Turnpike should give them a tax credit. We got, everything that we're getting up here is being inconvenienced. We got public service tearing up every roadway in this town. The mayor says we have the best streets. We have the worst streets in this county. Between public service ripping up all the side streets, they're up here, you guys are going to start doing work, public service still going to be here ripping up streets. So, the thing is, no matter what these residents say, you guys are going to get it. The problem with the traffic coming in, I hate to say it, guys, I went down, when you guys are working in the mornings, when we have the traffic, the flow coming in, longshoremen, they must be shorthanded because the traffic's coming out their gates. Going out, the traffic leaving is fine, their port. Coming in, it's hard, for some reason, they're not getting the trucks in fast enough. Then you got the Port Authority holding up the traffic also. So it's not just the longshoremen, you got the Port Authority. So, you have to figure out how they're going to stage their trucks when they're coming down Port Jersey Boulevard, because that's where the traffic is. And Will should know it, because I've been here since 1964. Jimmy was 1963, living in God's country down on 1st, 5th, 4th Street. I lived up here in what I'm going to call Ground Zero. Okay? So you guys got to figure that out, where you guys do their truck traffic. Because I'm going to be watching, and I'm going to be recording everything, starting once you start doing construction, once anything goes out of whack, I'm calling the state in.
Thank you, that's time. Next up, we'll have Robert Lambach, and I misspoke before, William Sampson already spoke, so Jack McKee, you will be on mic one, and Robert, go ahead.
Good evening, Robert Lambach, L-A-U-M-B-A-C-H. I'm a physician specializing in environmental health, who does research on the health effects of air pollution. I'm here to, personally representing myself, I do that research at Rutgers, but I'm here to present evidence that this project violates federal law and threatens public health. The environmental assessment is fundamentally flawed and not compliant with federal law because federal law explicitly prohibits segmenting projects to avoid the complete environmental review. Their own, NJTA's own traffic analysis assumes completion of the 8.1 million, excuse me, mile corridor project, proving this is one interconnected project requiring a full environmental impact statement, not a segmented review. The project is surrounded by environmental justice communities. We know that traffic-related air pollution makes asthma worse. We know that traffic-related air pollution affects heart disease, increases risk of adverse pregnancy outcomes, a whole host of environmental issues and problems that directly affect people's health. The EA's own analysis showed that there would be increased demand, traffic-induced demand, 32% increase versus a no-build scenario. There are alternatives, there are alternatives that maintain infrastructure and don't necessarily have to increase lanes and increase traffic. And overall, the project conflicts with, as we've heard tonight, local goals as well as state goals for environmental protection, for reducing greenhouse gases, for reducing dependence on cars. Overall, really is going to affect quality of life as well as health for people in the region as well as throughout the state.
Jack, after you speak, we're going to have Enver Pastula on mic one.
Am I supposed, Jack McKee, M-C-K-E-E. And I'm happy to see everyone here, it's really cool. You know, we don't have to agree, we have different opinions, but we're out here in the civic process, we're not ripping each other's heads off, and that's wonderful. I am not an engineer, and I would venture to say that most of the people in this room, particularly the people that speak loudest, often know the least about whether or not we need a new bridge. So I'm not going to sit here and pretend that I went to engineering school, and I know that you're lying, or I know that we absolutely need a new bridge. I don't. But what I do know is that the conversation we're having, very common sense things like more cars equals more fumes, I was in construction, I've owned my own residential contracting business, we're going to monitor dust and noise. Okay? And then what? Like if you make too much noise, are you going to put the Dean Noisifier on the bridge project? It doesn't make any sense, and insults our intelligence as citizens to say things like, "We talked to the Coast Guard, and they said it's A-OK." Guys, there's a tremendous lack of faith in government institutions, and to just come to us and say, "Trust us, we're your buddies at the Turnpike Authority," it's absurd. Now, I get that you are the Turnpike Authority, you're the road people. I don't blame you for trying to get the road made, and union guys and ladies, I don't blame you for wanting a project. The problem is, this is not the right project. And I understand what you said, that like, hey, we're not, it's not like there's a pot where there's the money and it's either going to Transit or the Turnpike Authority, but we have nowhere else to say this. And the reality is, we are out of room. I'm a New Jerseyan, there's no more room left here, guys, and we have to get smarter, and we have nowhere to say this. So we're here saying, invest in mass transit. We're going to look like fools when the World Cup comes here, and we don't have a train to the stadium. So, we're here saying that, with respect to the people who build things, with respect...
That's time.
I can be louder. Thank you.
Okay, after Enver, we are going to have Michael Silva on mic one, Hannah Radom on mic two, Mike Slammer, you will follow Michael Silva on mic one, and Danielle Daddamo will be on mic two. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Enver Pastula, I'm 11 years old. I live in Jersey City and walk and ride my bike around my neighborhood pretty much every day. I'm speaking here tonight to ask our elected officials and soon-to-be-elected governors to not support the plan to widen the turnpike. I went to the Assembly Forum and heard Assemblyman Sampson say he wants to support the plan because it will create jobs for his friends at the port. While he's a good speaker, he's not making much sense to me. I'm thinking about what type of job I might have when I grow up, and what will my neighborhood be like for me and my friends. This is what we know so far. We have too much traffic, the air isn't clean, and tards across the streets. But don't we have the opportunity to create more environmentally friendly jobs instead? We can make our neighborhoods cleaner and safer while fixing transportation. Why don't our leaders want that for us? Recently in Jersey City, there was a tragic car accident. You hear about car accidents in the news a lot. We don't want more cars stuffing into the Holland Tunnel through Bayonne. Can we stop being shortsighted and please look at what's possible for the future? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Hannah Radom, that's R-A-D-O-M. I am resident of Hudson County, I bike every day. I don't think anyone in this room or at all is opposing the idea of just improving the bridge, building a new bridge, creating union jobs. All these things are great. I don't think anyone has any problems with these, and it's disingenuous to pretend that that's what this is about. What this is really about is the widening of the turnpike. It's going to create, as others have already said before me, fumes, noise, things are already bad with that. I was almost killed by a car twice in the way of getting here. That's only going to get worse. We'd just like you to consider that there are alternatives to this. Again, what was just said about the World Cup and expanding transit, and how this is not the Turnpike Authority's job, but it has to be said somewhere, and the public transport out here is horrible. So, thank you for your time.
Michael Silva, if you are still interested in speaking, please step up, followed by Mike Slammer and Danielle Daddamo.
Hello. Thank you, my name is Mike Slammer, S-L-A-M-E-R. I've lived in Hudson County for over 10 years now, and respectfully, I just want to say to some members of the audience, this is not a war, this is not a political rally, and yet, I'm hearing job bosses justify their jobs, and I'm hearing mayors give stump speeches for political campaigns. Cool, but this is a public hearing, and we haven't heard a lot from the public, because we haven't had a chance to say what we want to say, because we're about five years behind schedule for this. We're neighbors, we live here, we're residents. This affects all of us, and our children, and all of those who are going to come after us. So first, to your adaptive management plan, it's dependent on residents to go to the Turnpike Authority to submit their complaints. If this forum, being held five years after it should have been, is any indication, does that mean that residents will hear their complaints being responded to in 2030? I hope not. I listened to all the presentations here, and I don't think anyone is opposed to reasonable infrastructure updates and upgrades. This bridge honestly sounds like a great idea. We actually need it, there's no doubt about that. The trucking needs it, the port needs it, we need to be able to move all these people and the commerce. But, you say it's designed for Hudson County with Hudson County residents in mind. I just don't agree with that, because if it was, you would have been listening to us for the past 10 years. You say you're working with the Port Authority on this. Can you put a PATH train running parallel to the turnpike? Because we've been screaming for that, we've been screaming at the Port Authority. That would win you points, and that would make you truly forward-thinking, future builders of America, and make Hudson County the great place we want it to be. Thank you.
Danielle, you're up next, followed by Elena Little on mic one, Talia Schwartz, you will be after Danielle, and George, you will be after Elena. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Danielle Daddamo, D-E-S-N-David, A-D-E-S-N-David, A-M-O, and I live in Jersey City, New Jersey. And I'm here tonight to say clearly, cancel this $11 billion turnpike expansion. I'm proudly pro-union. I support good jobs and fair wages, but this project is not about building a better future. It's about doubling down on outdated, polluting infrastructure that will do real harm to working-class communities like Jersey City, Bayonne, and Newark. You say this project will relieve congestion, but we all know that's a myth. Study after study proves that widening highways only brings more cars, more traffic, and more emissions. Induced demand is real, and you know it. If congestion relief is the goal, this project fails before it even begins. You showed a slide saying that project won't make a meaningful difference in air quality, won't reduce local truck traffic, and won't improve community cohesion. If a project doesn't make our air cleaner, our streets safer, or our neighborhoods stronger, then why are we spending money on it? This is not a mobility issue, it's a public health threat and a textbook case of environmental justice, injustice. And yes, I saw the environmental justice slide. 80 meetings, 15 metrics, four years. That's not justice, that's paperwork. Executive Order 172 demands early and meaningful engagement with the communities most impacted. You didn't do that. This hearing is too little, too late. We deserve clean air, safe streets, reliable transit, and jobs that build all of that. Meanwhile, New Jersey transit is underfunded. Fares are rising, services collapsing, and you're pouring billions into more lanes that won't fix anything. You say toll dollars aren't taxpayer dollars, but they're public dollars, and the public is watching. Cancel this expansion, invest in climate justice, invest in people.
Thank you.
And stop pretending...
Thank you, your time has expired, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Elena Little, and I'm a resident of Jersey City. I would thank you for accepting public comment, but the public was not presented with options, and it seems the most impactful decision has already been made. So instead, I am asking that the next governor put an end to this process and start anew with a process that actually includes the affected municipalities and communities, thoroughly examines all possible alternatives, and one that is public, transparent, and which actually seeks the best outcome for the people of New Jersey. I'm here today to strongly oppose the widening of the turnpike extension. Let me be clear, absolutely no one is opposed to safety improvements. We all want the safety improvements, we all want the good union jobs. Build a safe bridge, please, build it with union labor, please. But what we don't want is to add lanes of traffic. Highway windings have failed time and time again to reduce traffic, instead causing induced demand and putting more cars on the road, meaning travel times end up staying the same or even getting worse. In fact, Professor Ralph from the Blasting School at Rutgers and Professor Klein at Cornell modeled that the induced demand will cause an additional 100,000 vehicle miles traveled every day in our region. Again, adding lanes will make our traffic problems worse. This is going through environmental justice communities that are already overburdened. Just in Newark, one in four children already have asthma. Why are we spending $11 billion, with a B, dollars to put another 100,000 vehicle miles traveled per day on the road? This defies logic, it is nothing more than wasteful pork barrel spending. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Talia Schwartz, spelled S-C-H-W-A-R-T-Z. I live in Jersey City, and I want to say that Jersey City and Newark are the two largest cities in New Jersey, and they do not want this program. The mayors and the councils oppose this project, and the people oppose the project. While I respect that the people in Bayonne seem to support this project, there are a lot of people that don't. I can't really reconcile that the Turnpike is moving ahead with a project through a community that has said no vociferously. Our elected officials, our experts, and our community are united. How did we learn about this project? How did we learn about the alternatives? Not because the Turnpike Authority shared it with us, but because we Oprah'd the information. We are not filled with misinformation, we have simply read in detail the Turnpike's own documents that have not been shared with the public unless we asked for it. How is it acceptable to ram a highway through a community that doesn't want it? We were not given input on alternatives. Case in point, this is the first public hearing, and you've already paid out contracts and selected the alternative that you're moving ahead with. That is not community input. Finally, I find it offensive, truly offensive, when you tell me that there will be no impact on air quality. We all know that's because our air quality is already at the bottom. My son has asthma, and so do many kids in Jersey City and Bayonne. To be told that construction and cars will have no impact on air quality is an insult to a regular-thinking person. They are the biggest source of pollution in New Jersey. Finally, I pay the turnpike tolls, I drive, we all do. The Turnpike Authority is a state agency that reports to the governor, you're not a private agency. I want a state agency that works on behalf of me and my family.
Okay, our next speaker should be George Ballint at mic one, followed by Laura Wiles on mic two, Adrian Gandhi on mic one, and Isaac Smith on mic two.
As a reminder, excuse me, as a reminder, please try to maintain the two-minute limit. When you see your time is up, please stop your comments. If you have additional comments, you can provide them either online via phone or via written comment. Again, a reminder, please state and spell your last name when you begin your comment, and also, when you hear your name called, please line up behind the microphone to keep this moving. Thank you very much.
Hi there, my name is George Ballint, B-A-L-I-N-T. I'm a resident of Hoboken, and I would just like to ask a couple of questions. and I would just like to ask a couple of questions for the Turnpike Authority. So firstly, during the first introduction to the project, they mentioned that Section 1, the new bridge with the extra lanes, would be decreasing the amount of traffic on local roads. I'm wondering if that was a misstatement by the presenter as I'm not aware of any local roads in between exits 14 and 14A. But if I could get clarification on that, that would be great. Another question I have is the claim of reducing traffic by adding lanes. This has been shown to be false in pretty much every single time that it's been done. So if the Turnpike Authority has any, you know, studies or places that this has worked in the past because, as far as I'm aware, there isn't any. And then finally, I'm just wondering how we could confirm that there is going to be no impact on the health of the people that live in this area. As Mayor Balla said earlier, Hudson County has received an F rating when it comes to air quality. And adding more cars and more traffic does not seem to be increasing the air quality of the area. So I would just want to see if they could provide a little bit more into how that would make sense. Thank you, everybody.
Hi, my name's Laura Wiles. I think I'm the first person who has said that they're actually a resident of Bayonne and who's here. I'm just a resident, not representing any other organization, not an elected official. I'm a mom. I am raising two children with my family here, and I am against this project. So I want that to be really clear here. When I went to this, you know, I want to be well-informed when I go to a hearing, so I looked up some information about Bayonne. One thing I hadn't really appreciated was that 30% of Bayonne lives within 1,000 feet of heavy traffic. And that's 50% more than the rest of Hudson County and 250% more than the rest of New Jersey. So when you live in Bayonne, you live around traffic. It seems like we've gotten too used to living around all of this traffic. We don't connect it to the soot that we have to clean out of our windows or the asthma that our parents, our children, and our families and friends have to experience. But that doesn't mean we should let it get worse. Just because air quality is as bad as it is shouldn't justify making it so much worse. I also want to say that I do appreciate that the Turnpike Authority chose this school, Woodrow Wilson Elementary School, more than elementary school, for this hearing. 750 children are in this school every day. They're going to be 100 feet from eight lanes of traffic. Most of it and a lot of it trucks. There's been no study of the specific impacts on this school, the senior center next door. Everybody here, what I've heard a lot about is money. There's consultants who are making money in the back. There's professionals making money on the stage. We've heard a lot about longshoremen and contractors who stand to make money from this project. I've not heard one person talk about the people who will experience the air quality, the children in this school.
My name's Adrian Ghainda, G-H-A-I-N-D-A. For 27 years, I've called Jersey City and Hudson County home. When I worked at the League of Conservation Voters, and I went down to Atlantic City and advocated for offshore wind against the many enamorous naysayers of offshore wind, this hearing is giving me eerie flashbacks to going and making my way to unfamiliar territory where disinformation tactics are used to galvanize and where the fight for clean air and marginalized communities are being led by tireless and fierce advocates. To me, the billions of dollars that are proposed to be spent would be better off being given to clean energy. Clean energy jobs are good union jobs. What I am against, well, let me make myself clear. I'm not against union jobs. But what I am against are projects that compromise the health of residents as well as the health of children. Hudson County, as many have stated before me, has one of the poorest air qualities across the state. And I'm not a mathematician by trade, but allow me to give a simple equation. More lanes equals more cars. More cars equals more emissions. More emissions means even poorer air quality. I'm fully against the turnpike expansion, and I know infrastructure isn't a sexy topic. But if this were a project that's just about infrastructure and upkeeping systems that have been well 100 years in lack of upkeep, of course, we'd be more than willing to want that infrastructure to be improved. But alas, it's not. What this is is infrastructure that blatantly harms Black and Brown communities, and that is infrastructure that I cannot support. Thank you.
Our next group of speakers will be Isaac Smith at mic one, Aaron Weiner at mic two, Xavier Pastula at mic one after Isaac, and Aidan Gormley on mic two. Are any of the people I just called?
Again, please, when you hear your name, come up to the microphone and line up to be ready to speak.
Hi. My name is Xavier Pastula. I live in Jersey City with my family. We walk the score, and I like to play in parks. There are a lot of cars that drive through in rush when we walk. I wish we didn't. I wish that didn't happen so much. People have bad air, and I don't want to make it worse. Thank you for listening.
Here, I think you hear a common theme from the actual residents here is that we're all for safety and infrastructure. By all means, we're all for quality jobs. We just really hope that you consider expanding the roadways and the expansion of widening the roads. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aaron Weiner, W-E-I-N-E-R. First, I'm going to give a prepared remark from Commissioner Bill O'Day, and then I'm going to speak a little bit. So Bill's remark is, "I stand with the protesters opposing the $11 billion turnpike widening between Newark and Jersey City. Let me be clear. This project is not a repair of a bridge. This project is backwards, wasteful investment that prioritizes car traffic over the urgent needs of public transit riders. At a time when NJ Transit is underfunded, fares are rising, and readership is struggling, this misguided initiative diverts public dollars into a plan that will increase emissions, worsen air quality, and deepen our dependence on outdated infrastructure. The next governor has the power and the responsibility to stop this. We need a future built on clean transit, not more pollution and gridlock." That's the end of his statement. The classic book about building, The Power Broker, talks about how this same thing happened 80 years ago when Robert Moses tried widening all of his bridges that were jam-packed. They were bumper-to-bumper traffic. And instead of doing anything that had anything to do with public transportation, he just wanted to build more, widen the roads. And every single time, the day that he opened new roads, the new expansions, they were immediately gridlocked again. This happened in the Cross Bronx. This happened in the Southern Parkway. This always happens. This is how it goes. If you haven't read the book, shame on you. You really need to. Thank you.
Is Aidan available to speak? Okay. Stephanie Martinez on mic one, Edna Rashid on mic two, Monica Van Pelt on mic one, Jesse Halpern on mic two.
Peace. My name is Stephanie Martinez, M-A-R-T-I-N-E-Z. I am a Newark resident, born in Jersey City, grew up in Hudson County. I would like to thank the New Jersey Turnpike for letting the community speak. But I would have loved this to happen before y'all made the decision to push this disastrous project forward and not kick out the people who wanted to voice their concerns in your public session meeting last year. I'm here to reiterate that we need the bridge fixed, but we do not want another lane. I stand with the Jersey City folks and neighboring communities coming out saying we don't want this project. We have had the support of elected officials, including Newark, Jersey City, Hoboken mayors saying they don't want it. We have had doctors, researchers, and communities' loved ones saying our children's lungs do not want this. My question is, who is this benefiting? What grassroots organizations are y'all connecting with to engage and collaborate to check off your little environmental checkbox? Communities like mine, Black and Brown, working-class families, are not dumping grounds. We are people. And widening highways have cut through historically marginalized neighborhoods by redlining, displacing communities because back in 1949, NJ Turnpike displaced more than 450 homes in Elizabeth rather than rerouting the project around predominantly Black neighborhoods. And fast forward 2025, we are seeing the same agenda. Y'all are saying you're not displacing people, but the air quality is gonna be shit. And those who are pushing this disastrous project forward and thinking there is no significant impact on our community, y'all don't worry about a family member suffering from asthma in an overburdened area. Y'all don't worry about the adverse health effects that frags from my mom who suffers from exposure to air pollution.
Thank you for your...
I'm here because of doctor's appointments, and I'm always going to. I'm translating the doctors.
Thank you.
My mom, suffering from least air pollution. I know the direct cause through her...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Edna Mahan Rashid. Edna is Hebrew for rejuvenation. My hand is Creek Indian for those who work with their hands. Rashid is Aramaic, the one who follows the right God. I'm making this statement first because I've listened to all of the speakers, and I did my due diligence. And I have some stuff written here because I don't want to go off my topic. But I have to say before I begin that I think that this is... First, I do support the project. And I'm supporting it as a third generation who actually worked on these bridges. And I asked my 85-year-old uncle, who was responsible for working on the last bridge, what did he think about it? And so he told me that there's issues, and there's always going to be issue with construction. But more importantly, he said that he wanted to commend the authority because the approach that they're taking is very friendly to the environment. And he said that because when those bridges were originally made, there was no support system. So the fact that they thought about that is very important. And then the other thing that I wanted to say, and I'm going to try and say this really quick, is that the project presents unique opportunities to revitalize our neighborhoods, increase in jobs, access, and local events. It provides us with a unique opportunity for workforce development, for workforce development, for inclusion of the small businesses in the neighborhood. And, you know, I'm hearing people say that the New Jersey Turnpike Authority hasn't been contributing in the open process. I happened to have looked up that before I came here. And I know that they have done some things, and I know you could go and find it because I found it. And the fact that they've contributed a half a billion dollars a year to public transit and contribute 89 million annual to support the Gateway Development Project.
Thank you.
And I know that we've talked about, if I could just finish this one sentence, is being inclusive and looking at all the transportation programs that are in existence and combining those services.
Thank you for your comment. Your time has expired. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. How are you? My name is Monica Van Pelt. Last name, two words, V as in Victor, A, N as in Nancy, capital P as in Paul, E, L, T as in Tom. And, uh... So... Okay, so my work is rooted in ensuring that workforce systems actually serve people. So I'm not going to offer an opinion on the bridge because I don't know enough to give an informed decision. But I can tell you, I was a resident of Newark most of my life. I have family that are construction. I have family that are longshoremen. I owned a trucking company right here on Sip Avenue, Tulow's Trucks Up. And I have lung disease and asthma. Never smoked a day of my life, so I know that there are effects. So hopefully, you all are doing the work that needed to be done. But what I really want to share is that historically, when people have come into these spaces to do these types of projects, there's a lot of information that's shared, but there's not a lot of being able to honor the commitments that are made. And so my focus is really on sustainability and creating pathways that will turn short-term opportunities into long-term mobility. And when these major infrastructure projects are proposed, we hear big promises, right, on job creation and economic growth and environmental responsibility. But my question, as a compliance person and former CFO, is who benefits? Who is actually being impacted? Who's actually benefiting? How do we hold these commitments up over time, right? And also, my problem is that the success is not measured by the bridge. Success is measured by the impact on the lives. And so when we move forward, whether you are renewing the bridge, excuse me, replacing the bridge, or you're repairing the bridge, remember that there are people who are coming to work. There are people that are impacted, no matter which way you go. And I just ask that there is a commitment to honoring and being transparent in the process moving forward. And from what I hear, we're a little late to the party. So I appreciate the time.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Halpern, H-A-L-P-E-R-N. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you for standing up to Big Transit. Thank you for standing up for character, for what is right, for what is fundamentally American. Are there other ways to spend the money? Actually fixing traffic while also creating good-paying jobs for union labor, such as expanding the Hudson-Bergen Light Rail? Could we pass a law to allow more money from the Turnpike Authority to be spent on transit? Absolutely. But this is America, sirs and ma'am. In this country, we pride ourselves on doubling down, even when we know better. Yes, the turnpike needs repair. But I really want to thank you for the real highlight of this project. We are building one more lane. We've been adding just one more lane for decades now. Has it fixed traffic? Absolutely not. Do we have experts who have studied this issue and can tell us how to fix traffic, which is by building transit? Do we have other countries and cities around the world whose example we can draw ideas from to fix traffic? Can we do those things? Absolutely. But why should that stop us? Getting stuck in traffic? Our heritage. Asthma? Our heritage. Polluting our air? Our heritage. Do our kids deserve a better world with cleaner air? Eh, they're kids. They'll get over it. Thank you for your service. Keep up the good work. God bless you, and God bless the traffic-clogged streets of the United States of America.
Our next group of speakers will be Doug O'Malley at mic one, Our next group of speakers will be Doug O'Malley at mic one, Chris LaLevy at mic two, Brian McLaughlin at mic one, and James Lee at mic two.
Good evening. My name is Doug O'Malley, D-O-U-G-O-Malley, O apostrophe, capital M-A-L-L-E-Y, Director of Environment in Jersey, representing more than 80,000 citizen members and activists across this great state. I wanted to start off my comments by saying, there should be more hearings. This should not be one-and-done. We're barely an hour in to this hearing. We are now in Bayonne, obviously. There should be hearings in Newark and Jersey City. That should be obvious. Under EO 172, which is why we're having this hearing, the goal of that executive order under Governor Kane was to have public comment be an integral part of the design process. This is certainly not integral. This, dare I say, is an afterthought because this is happening after eminent domain and design has happened. So this is really kind of a moment of truth for the Turnpike Authority to say, do these comments actually matter? And does this fulfill the intent of EO 172? I'll also note the record from the Turnpike Authority regarding EO 72 and turnpike widenings going back to 8A, you know, more than 15 years ago, showed that public hearings actually happened before the design process occurred. That is something that is, you know, should be not only noted, but that should be a reason why there should be more of a public process on this. We are not talking about farm fields in Mercer and Middlesex County. We're talking about the largest highway expansion in the modern era here in Hudson County, affecting literally one of the largest counties in the state. I also just wanted to note, for the record, when we're talking about transit funding, the Turnpike Authority has funded transit more than $700 million in the FY '23 budget. When we're talking about where transit's going to go, we should talk about transit in 2036 because we just saw two days without transit. We are underfunding our mass transit system, even with the corporate transit fee. This is a reminder that, yes, you can expand a bridge. You can have an $11 billion project to expand the turnpike extension. But what are you doing to help all transit riders, not just car riders? Thank you.
James Lee, Lee is L-E-E. I'm a parent and resident of Jersey City. I oppose this project. We all breathe the same air. We are all human. We are all flesh and bone. No one is so strong as to be able to withstand a crash with a multi-ton vehicle. I want to comment and express a few concerns based on the credibility of the turnpike's current conditions and current behavior. The Turnpike Authority keeps talking about safety, but actually does nothing to enhance its biggest safety issue, which is that many people die on its roadways every year. I'm sure everyone here knows someone that's been in a crash on the turnpike. There are 16,000 crashes a year on the turnpike and dozens of deaths. Nearly 700 deaths occur a year on New Jersey roadways, but the turnpike has never addressed this issue. This is a huge problem in the state of New Jersey, and for point of reference, roughly three times the murder rate. The crash rate on the turnpike, as you must know, is stable per mile driven, and more cars will mean more crashes and more deaths. I asked the Turnpike Authority to reexamine its purported safety benefits and account for the holistic safety issues, including the crashes on the turnpike, but also local crashes that will occur due to more driving on local streets. Second, you talk about noise barriers, but what about the turnpike's existing lack of noise mitigation on the existing roadway? For the repairs we do now, the jackhammers come at 2:00 a.m. There are no noise barriers for Jersey City past any of the high schools or elementary schools or homes. It's a contradiction to say you're going to erect new ones when you don't deal with existing issues. Last, the order of this project is all wrong. First, the project was proposed and concluded. Then, a public campaign for this project was embarked on by you all to push forward long after no other all terms were considered. It's an insult to intelligence to say you will follow the science or talk about data when you start with a conclusion. Go back to the drawing board and actually have a public process. Thank you.
Are Chris or Brian available to speak? Okay. We'll move on to our next group of speakers. That will be Ada Meskel, Misso Dem, Antonio Candemir, and Samuel Conway.
Good evening. My name is Ada Meskel, and I speak to you tonight as a public health professional, proud Woodrow Wilson alum that went to school here and a resident of 1225 Kennedy Boulevard, just two blocks up the road. I have worked for years on health equity and public health, and I'm here because this project, as currently proposed, raises serious and unresolved health risks for our community. The environmental assessment underestimates the true human cost of this expansion. As someone trained in public health, I must emphasize federal thresholds are not the same as community safety. The environmental assessment repeatedly assures us that PM2.5 emissions and noise levels will remain within the regulatory limits. But we know from decades of research, including the Harvard toxicity study and global burden of disease reports, that even legally permissible levels of fine particulate pollution cause heart disease, asthma, low birth weight, and early death, especially in densely populated and economically vulnerable areas. I have included peer-reviewed studies as a reference that I will submit formally for you to review. We've seen this play out before in the Cross Bronx Expressway modernization, the I-10 expansion in Houston, where there's displacement and long-term air quality decline. Here in Bayonne, we are being told that no homes will be demolished, so this project has no significant impact. But health doesn't end at the property line. Noise from construction and post-construction traffic will increase near the boulevard, Currys Woods, the Liberty Bay Club, and all areas with high proportions of seniors, family, and low-income households. The EA admits this, and yet it denies noise walls for some of the most impacted residents, not because the impact isn't real, but because it falls short of the decibel threshold. That's not good enough. Imagine students in this school trying to get work done over the 11 years that this construction project is going on.
Hello, good evening. My name is Misso Demko. That's M-I-S-O-D-E-M-K-O. I'm a Bayonne resident. I grew up in Bayonne, and I've lived here for over 20 years. I want to start by noting who's in the room with us right now. All the empty chairs are the people interested that this project starts. All the people who are still here with us are the ones interested in how this project ends. We're the ones who will be living here, dealing with the consequences because we're deeply invested in our community. And who is that? It's the public and all the professionals who are entrusted to protect our interests as a government agency. I'm here because ever since I first heard about this project here in Hudson County, just as on the national stage, regardless of Democratic or Republican affiliation, we, the public, are constantly presented with false binaries. Are you for or against safety? Are you for or against unions? Are you for or against modernization? So I'm here to speak for myself about a concern for a turnpike expansion being packaged as a bridge replacement safety initiative, which is not true. So in the spirit of myth busting, I would like to select three. One is the aim of this project being congestion relief. One question, where in New Jersey has a turnpike expansion relieved congestion? Second question, economic growth and development. I actually am really glad my mayor, Mayor Davis, spoke about his firm support for development because I, too, want to see Bayonne grow, and I recognize that turnpike played a role in that historically. If we're talking about modernization, we have to stop assuming this comes with cars, and then we can really soar. This is an existential issue for the Turnpike Authority, whose one sole purpose is to build roads. We have to resolve this outside of this room on different levels. The third one, that no taxpayer dollars will be used for this program? That's also not true. What happens about the roads that feed and come out of the turnpike? Who deals with enforcement and safety? Please involve the public. And yeah, I don't know. We'll see what happens.
Hello, hello. Hi, my name is Antonio, last name Candemir, C-A-N-D-E-M-I-R. And I am a commuter and college student. I strongly oppose the widening of the highway. Widening the turnpike is a disastrous idea, which we learned is not a solution to our transportation problems. We know there will be more pollution and more traffic. These are guarantees. These highways that we are widening are not improving our communities by connecting them. They are destroying and dividing them. I don't have much of a problem with maintenance of our existing highways as we have no choice. But I have a problem with the reconstruction in regards to widening the turnpike. We are using our New Jersey Turnpike Authority dollars to widen a highway instead of using this money we have for maintenance of our existing highways. We could do better with this money. We could not rely on state and federal dollars in the future as we have a reserve. I ask for all the communities that this impacts to please stop the widening of the highway. Thank you.
Is Samuel Conway here to speak? At this time, we have a number of speakers who signed up and did not come up to speak. So if that's you, we invite you to come up and take the time that has been allotted to you. If not, that is our list for now. If anyone's still here who would like to speak, please sign up at the speaker table at the back of the room.
Do we have any speakers that have not had the opportunity to put their comment on the record? Seeing none. Thank you for your participation this evening. This concludes tonight's public hearing. As a reminder, pursuant to New Jersey Executive Order 172, the Turnpike Authority will continue to accept comments and questions until July 3, 2025. All of your comments and questions gathered tonight, as well as through the July 3 public comment period, will be addressed in the formal public hearing report, which will be available on the program website, NBHCE.com. Additionally, the recorded presentation will be available on the Turnpike Authority and program websites within seven days. Thank you again. Have a good evening and get home safely.